I'd like to call to order the scheduled meeting of the Tiverton Town Council, Monday, February 10, 2014. I'd like to begin with the Pledge of Allegiance.
Our pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Madam Clerk?
Counselor Gerlach.
Present.
Counselor Ruda.
Present.
Counselor Shabbitt.
Present.
Counselor Lambert.
Present.
Counselor Roderick.
Present.
Counselor DiMediris.
Present.
Counselor Pelletier.
Yes, ma'am.
All present.
Thank you. Consent agenda. Approval of minutes, regular council meeting, January 27, 2014. Minutes of regular council meeting, January 13, 2014. Approval of minutes, council special meeting, January 11, 2014. Counselor Ruda abstained, absent. Approval of minutes, council workshop, January 6, 2014. Counselor Pelletier abstained, absent. Approval of executive session minutes, special meeting, January 22, 2014. Interviews. Approval of executive session minutes, special meeting, January 23, 2014. Interviews. Approval of minutes, special council meeting, February 3, 2014. Receive of minutes from the following boards and commissions. Art Council, Conservation Commission, Historic Preservation Advisory Board, Waste Water Management Commission, too. Correspondence, none. Mike Zhang-Fu-Lee Corp., doing business as Asia Gourmet, 1715 Stafford Road, wrote, "Approval of Corporate Name Change on Liquor and Victuance License to Foo Bing Man Corp. Authorization of Advertisement for a Full-Time Planner." Barbara Pelletier, minutes from Newport and Bristol County Convention Visitors Bureau, January meeting, Meals and Beverage Tax Report, and Information Regarding Bed and Breakfast Establishments. Kate Micho, Administrator Officer, Report of Activities for January 2014. Proposed Historic District, Refer to Planning Board for Recommendation on Revised Map and Language. Department Reports for Month of January 2014. Denise Soret, Treasurer, Report on Banking, Trusts, and Other Accounts Requested on January 27 meeting. Anything to be removed? Number eight, please.
Number A1A and number five.
Number 1A and number five.
And, Mr. President, I'd like to take CA 7, please.
CA 7. Any others? Okay, I'll entertain a motion for the rest of the consent agenda.
So moved.
Second.
Have a motion on second, all those in favor. Okay, we'll begin with CA 1A.
Just have a minor correction on page three. Under Presentations from the Pecassid Hills Cemetery, probably five lines up from the bottom of the paragraph where it says revenues cover the maintenance. That would be, revenue does not cover the maintenance. I'll make a motion to approve agenda item A1A as amended.
We have a motion second, all those in favor. Motion carries. Okay, we'll go to CA 5.
Oh, not number five, I'm number eight.
CA 5.
I'm number five.
Made me really nervous, Ed, because my mind is going completely.
As I was reading this, a thought occurred to me that, I know we've gone back and forth about planner, part-time planner, full-time planner, consulting option for the planning duties, and my only question is, I know we've discussed it as being a matter of policy, town council policy, to have a town planner, and I'm not sure if it should be a policy because if it's policy, then the policy can change with the council that comes in or the next council that comes in may not want a planner or feel the need that there is a planner. And I only wanted to mention that perhaps this issue should be actually a part of the charter. Since this, in effect, is a town planner is responsible for staff, it then becomes a staff position, and all department head staff positions are in the charter. So I just wanted to bring that to everyone's attention.
Okay. Anything else you want to add?
Don't want to add or subtract anything.
Okay, anyone else? We'll move on. Okay, I'll entertain a motion.
So moved.
Second.
We have a motion on second, all those in favor. Post. CA 7.
Sure. This is just, actually, just a question for Kate. I saw her here. You know, I'll only speak for myself. I read with interest the notes from the January 9 meeting that had a preliminary review of the mapping project called Sea Level Rise Affecting Marshes Model, or SLAM. There's a note at the end about when things are finalized, whether to bring to the council. You know, I'd love to see something like this come before the council. I think this is, while potentially a long-range issue, shouldn't preclude us from, you know, having that discussion and reviewing things sooner rather than later. So I don't know if others might be interested in that, but try to get that on a council agenda whenever that's finalized.
Sure, and that group did offer to come to the council and do a short presentation as part of one of your meetings, if that's the way you'd like to handle it.
Yeah, that would work.
All the maps will be available online once they're finalized, and we'll get that information out to you as well.
Okay, great, thanks.
Anything else on that item?
Nope.
Okay, I'll entertain a motion.
So moved.
Second.
Have a motion on second, all those in favor. Motion carries. Okay, CA 8.
Number eight relates to the proposed historic district and the revised map and language. Specifically, the regulation is the historic district regulations, and we indicated in the agenda that it's referred to the Planning Board for Recommendations on Revised Map and Language. I did want to simply remind everyone that we had also proposed, and as I recall, voted on a decision to have a joint meeting with the Planning Board.
Yes.
Relative to this regulation. So I'm assuming that it won't be sent back to us with the revisions before we have our joint meeting. I don't think there's any rush on this issue at all, but I just wanted to remind everyone that we had agreed to a joint meeting.
Nancy?
Yes, yes, we can have a joint meeting, we'll get back.
Thank you.
Can I just ask a quick question on that? So would the joint meeting be in lieu of the Planning Board taking their next review? Or would that also occur prior to a joint meeting?
It would be after they come up with their next recommendation.
Do we know, do we know when that might get slated for a Planning Board agenda? Just, I guess, stay tuned. Sorry.
I believe, once it's officially referred by the council, it'll go on the next available Planning Board agenda. The next Planning Board meeting is scheduled for March 4.
So it's clear. My only concern is with requesting the joint Planning Board meeting is that we have some shared input before the revised regulations get back to us. We might as well get our input before we have to vote on the issue.
Certainly, if you have dates in mind, you can forward them to me, and I can poll the Planning Board members for their availability.
Okay, great, great, thank you.
We'll talk to the acting town administrator. Yes, Mr. Tights?
Yeah, I'm just, it will be coming for, it would come back, and there'd be a public hearing. But I'm trying to find out what it is you're looking, you're looking for, a joint workshop with the Planning Board before it goes to a public hearing?
No, no. As written here, I would get the impression that the proposed regulations will be revised in some fashion by the Planning Board and again sent back to us. I'm saying, let's have a joint meeting with the Planning Board and get our input up front if we have any suggestions. Why should it come back to us without getting any input at all from the town council?
I think that's...
This was sent on the conceptual, as to whether they wanted to...
Right, right. I don't know that...
Now they're asking for the recommendations.
Yeah, I don't think that there's been major changes to the language. The map has been what was changed.
Yeah. Yeah, I just hate to have it come back again. We find some issues that we raise on the town council, send it back again to the Planning Board. Why don't we just have a meeting with them, try to make sure we have a final product that's sent to the town council for whatever public hearing we have and for a final vote on it?
Then we should have that workshop before the Planning Board gives their recommendation.
Right, that's my point.
Right. So Nancy's gonna pick some dates and then...
I don't think we have much time open, but...
Yeah, I know. I think Sunday at 2:00.
Sunday at 2:00, Nancy. Yeah.
Okay, I will entertain a motion on CA 8. We have a motion second, all those in favor. Motion passes. Open public forum for announcements, comments, and questions. And I just remind everybody again, it is our policy normally not to respond, but we will listen and again, try to keep it as brief as possible. Okay, Jim Odell.
Good evening, I'm Jim Odell, Warren Avenue. Once again, I have the dubious honor of standing before our council to talk about our continued embarrassment in the town of Tiverton. Maybe I'm not getting through, but I'll keep speaking until I do every meeting. Like a jackhammer to a boulder, no matter how thick or difficult a subject or object is, if you hit it hard enough and often enough, sooner or later it breaks and you do get through. In recent memory, in my opinion, you've made several poor decisions regarding, without regarding, how your constituents feel about these issues. Allowing our disgraced town administrator to retire is an example of a bad decision, in my opinion. Spending money or attempting grants and spending money instead of fixing infrastructure, to buy a gas station in a deal in the back is another example of, in my opinion, a bad decision. You were elected to the council to be our governing body of our town and to set policy and make decisions that are in the best interests of the townspeople. I can tell you that since our last council meeting, I've spoken to at least 200 residents about these issues. Not one person had anything to say in support of the personnel issues, and only one person agreed with the gas station purchase citing infrastructure needs. I have to agree. My wife also printed out a short article and comments with it of what some of the residents think of these issues, just so that you don't think I'm the only one of this opinion. I believe she emailed a copy to each member of the council. I say that you've fallen down on the responsibility to the people of Tiverton. Recently, you had a chance to redeem yourselves, and I spoke of this at the last council meeting, you had a chance to redeem yourselves with regard to our maintenance head and the issues around him, and send a loud message that employee misconduct is unacceptable and will not be tolerated, but once again, you let him retire and collect his pension. Your reasoning, in my opinion, shows cowardice and lacks leadership. Anyone can sue for almost anything in this day and age, and the fact that Tiverton might have been sued for doing the right thing and firing this maintenance head for misconduct is not a reason for the continued cowardice and lack of leadership of this council. There are two more department heads that I know of that are being closely looked at at this time for various reasons. If this pattern continues of just allowing poor employees to retire instead of facing the music and having to pay replacement employees, this town will be bankrupt in no time, just that and of itself. Furthermore, and I state this emphatically, if these decisions are based on the advice of our solicitor, then it's high time we look there as well. There is a huge dark cloud hanging over Tiverton right now. Employee misconduct, backroom deals, crumbling infrastructure, lack of a commercial tax base, and poor decision-making on the part of our town council. These are all making Tiverton a damn laughing stock and as well, an undesirable place to live or locate a commercial business. I wish you would all take a very hard look at what's been happening lately and decisions that you have made, start making some better choices based on doing what is right instead of what might happen if you do.
Yes, Jeff Belli, Birch Street. I would just like to briefly state my displeasure to this council. It was just reiterated by Mr. Odell earlier. I want to specifically state my displeasure to this council. The lack of transparency in this council has gone to zero. The lack of leadership has also gone to zero within the same issue. There's certain, there's no leadership. People out, they get away with what they want. We're allowing people to just up and retire instead of facing the music and facing the law and doing the right thing. Okay? The one thing, I just looked at your budget. We're adding more debt to our town. Can we please pay some off first before we add more? We're already adding more and obligated to more when the library is gonna be finished. Can we at least pay some of that off before we add more? You know, if you people wanted to buy a new utility truck, maybe you should have thought about that before you gave, you know, and I quote the Newport Herald News, $54,000 to a maintenance director, and stole probably that amount of money on you when he was working on his own properties. Thank you.
Again, I'm not going to say this, but I'm gonna tell you, be very careful what you say. This is a public forum, but you are talking about people who are not here, so I would be very cautious. Barbara Pelletier.
I'd like to remind everyone, Channel 6 broadcast will be Thursday morning, Thursday at 5:00. We did photograph well, we are very picturesque, that's positive, and the, excuse me, the broadcast will be repeated Friday morning at 5:00 for anybody who's awake at that time. The other thing I'd like to point out to you is, on the letter that I, on the report that I submitted, is an enclosure on Madison, Wisconsin's bed and breakfast law, and if we are about to welcome more people into town, I think we should get that. I think we've been working at it for about a month, a year now. We should get maybe some of those ducks all lined up in a row. And I had that thought since Grinnell's was brought up, the beach, the gas station. Is there any way that that could be repositioned into a summertime, nine-month seasonal meeting center for town? If you took down some of the walls, replaced them with opening glass panels and repurposed the bathhouses, toilets from the beach into that, maybe it could be an asset, but I don't know how that would work with U of D, I'm paying part of the bill or whatever, but I think it would make a very nice visitor's center, open gazable, close some doors kind of situation. I don't know if anyone thought of that, but rather than knock the whole thing down, maybe we can utilize it. That's all, thank you.
Thank you. Mike Burke?
Thank you, Mr. President, members of the council. Mike Burke, Durfee Road, Chairman of the Tiverton Democratic Town Committee. I want to speak to you tonight regarding executive sessions and the Open Meetings Act. Not here to pass judgment on decisions that you've made recently because I've not been a party to all the facts, so I don't feel it's appropriate for me to pass judgment on those. I do think that this council has made great strides in moving a lot of items that have been punted down the road to you from the past, so I appreciate that. But the Open Meetings Act is extremely important to all of us, and part of the Open Meetings Act, certainly, it can be open to interpretation, but the spirit of the Open Meetings Act is intended to provide the public with as much information on the decisions you make, other public bodies make, and how you vote on those decisions. So specifically, I want to reference the Public Meetings Act as it relates to executive session. And I'm reading from the Attorney General's Manual, found online at the Attorney General's Office. On page 13 of that manual, it speaks to when votes that are taken in executive session are to be disclosed. So if a vote is cast during the exec session itself, the vote must be disclosed as soon as the open session is reconvened. Within two weeks of any vote, the public body must make available at its office a record listing how each individual member voted on a particular issue. There are exceptions for that in terms of votes taken during the session need not be disclosed for the period of time during which its disclosure would jeopardize any strategy, negotiation, or investigation undertaken pursuant to a properly closed meeting. So my example to you is, I believe, the, and I may be wrong on the date, so I apologize if I am. The agreement on the Martin situation was voted on at the January 27 closed executive session that the meetings were, the minutes were sealed. So two weeks from that date would be today. So I am hopeful that either today's meeting, or it doesn't even actually, actually have to be in the meeting, I don't believe, within the clerk's office, that the votes that were taken by each individual member will be made public at a minimum. However, there are also ways that you can have an executive session and not close the session, not, I'm sorry, not seal the minutes, but redact components that are elements that are exceptions under the Public Meetings Act law. So for example, if during the executive session you were talking about a personnel matter and you were talking about, and you were finalizing an agreement on a land purchase, well, that's finalized, that's an, the land purchase is finalized, so that is open to the public. The personnel matter may not be, so you can redact that from the minutes, and that's allowable. So what I want to leave you with is the hope that going forward, when you're having an executive session, you will look at that balancing act and err on the side of making public the votes as quickly as possible and making public as much information as is allowable without jeopardizing aspects that the Open Meetings Act does allow you to close. So thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Shane Genrow, am I correct?
All I have to say is, I'm not happy with the way the Bob Martin case was resolved. That's all.
Thank you.
Dave Cabral?
Good evening, I'm in agreement with Odell's and so forth, with the agreement on Mr. Martin. I think that should be reviewed again, although I don't know all the facts behind the doors. However, I don't think that was a proper decision. Thank you.
And the last one, and please forgive me because I can't read your last name, but Wayne?
Gabaseras.
Okay, Gabaseras.
Wayne Gabaseras, Stafford Road. I just wanted to say I don't agree with the decision the town council made on the Martin case. That's it.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. President, may I speak?
You didn't sign up, but...
Yeah, the sign-in sheet had already been delivered when I arrived, I apologize.
Okay, all right, I will allow it if you'll be brief.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. President. Distinguished ladies and gentlemen of the council, my name is Heather Martino. I reside at Sandra Lee Lane. I am an attorney, I am a human resources professional, I am a professor of public personnel administration, I am a government employee, and I am, again, a resident and taxpayer of the town of Tiverton. It is not my intent here tonight to disrespect the council or to impugn anyone's character. I am here solely in response to the News Channel 10 article that I read very recently regarding your maintenance foreman. I don't know Mr. Martin, I've never met him, I have no problems with him or even with his character. And I, for one, know firsthand that public human resources issues are quite confidential, that most people don't know all of the information, and I know as well, the press's inclination to favor sensationalism over mitigating facts. Having said that, there were some facts cited in the article which I personally find to be quite shocking to my conscience. And those facts are, with respect to the allegations against him, and despite of those allegations, that Mr. Martin will be allowed to retire on April 22 of this year, which tells me with my background that he is not yet eligible to retire. But in order to bide his time, so to speak, he is now out of work, discharging sick time, which in my opinion is a misuse of sick time, that employees are not normally allowed to discharge unless they are actually sick or taking care of a sick family member. The article also states that once Mr. Martin retires on April 22, he will be paid out for the remainder of his unused vacation and comp time to the tune of $35,000. Now, I don't know if all of these facts are correct as reported, but if they are correct, then my intuition tells me that whoever negotiated this agreement on behalf of the town and on behalf of the council and on behalf of the taxpayers did this town a great disservice. I personally am very disappointed with the resolution of this issue, and I just want to mention that I thought I was coming here tonight, quite naively, to be the only person to speak in opposition to the council's action on this issue. Obviously, I was wrong, but for what it's worth, this is my opinion, and if there's anything I can do to assist the council moving forward, I invite you to please contact me. If anyone would like my contact information, please let me know, and I will leave you some business cards. Thank you very much for your time and for allowing me to speak.
Thank you.
Please. Mr. Tights, I'm going to ask if I may make a comment.
Me too, Mr. Tights.
I would like to make a comment too, but I won't.
I don't think I need permission.
Do we need to add this?
Yeah, yeah.
All right, I move that we add, what do I move that we add?
Counsel comments.
Counsel comments relating to the open forum for discussion purposes only.
Second.
Motion second, all those in favor. Okay. First of all, I want to tell everybody in the town of Tiverton that the deal reached with Mr. Martin was in the best interest of the town of Tiverton, and as far as the compensation that he received, according to his union contract, whether he retired or was fired, he would have received as such. So actually, we made out better than what he would have been entitled to. So, and again, these are issues that we struggled and fought with, but in the best interest of this town, that was the decision we reached.
I'd like to say that the vote was six to one. I voted against the contract, the agreement, but I'd like to say that it was not that I didn't feel he shouldn't retire. All along, I did go along with that, and that's because I felt it was a fiscally responsible thing for this council to do. At the very end, I changed my mind only because of some of the things that was in this agreement. One was the gag order, that everyone is calling it. I, it's very difficult to make me be quiet, and I thought I'd have a problem with that. And also, there was a few little things in there that I didn't agree with. Mr. Martin would have received that money whether he was terminated or whether we allowed him to retire. If we would have terminated Mr. Martin, it would have been a long process of grievances and lawsuits, which would have run us over $100,000.
Or more.
Or more. Although I feel that some of you, at this point, would say, go ahead and do it, but I would like to see what you would have done two years ago when Mr. Martin won, was back here, we spent $100,000, and we didn't accomplish. back here, we spent a hundred thousand dollars, and we didn't accomplish anything. I felt it was the fiscally responsible thing to do. There is many facts that none of you know, and there's many facts that we cannot allow out there. As far as Mr. Martin being allowed to retire in April, Mr. Martin was eligible to retire many years, right? At least a few years ago. So he could have retired anyway. I do, I do know what it must look like being out there and looking in, but you have to have trust that we, that we had all the facts together, we didn't feel that there was any way we could make another decision, and we did what was best for the town. And I know that you're sitting there right now saying, "Well, you should have terminated him." But I'd like to see what your opinion would have been, two years ago, after you saw what it cost, and it was very possible he would be working back here.
For the most part, I'm adopting what's already been said. I think it's important to keep in mind that the information that we have may or may not have creeped out to the public in the form of gossip. What we had were the facts, and we had to make a decision based on those facts. And I'd like to remind a lot of people, some of whom have spoken. I received a number of phone calls from people giving their viewpoint, and my response to every one of them was, "Okay. Put your list together of witnesses, put your name on that list, put your addresses and telephone numbers together, and send it to the state police." Now, you know how many of you sent your name and address and telephone number to the state police? Zero. Thank you.
Anyone else?
I'd like to say one more thing, because I just feel it's necessary. All the problems that the town council has dealt with in the last year and a half, we inherited. They were there, they were existing, and we're doing the best we can to address it in the way that we feel is best for this town. And I'm sorry if people don't like it, but we have all the facts in front of us, and what we're doing, we inherited these problems. And we are a council that's moving forward and trying to lead the path a better way. And I'm sorry we've disappointed people, but I really feel we're making the best decisions.
Just have one brief comment, and this has nothing to do with Mr. Martin, but rather the budget. Please feel free to come out and join us at all of our budget deliberations. All of the workshops that the council has had in the evenings and on Saturday mornings are all open to the public. You can hear with extreme granularity everything that we are going through, the tough discussions that we're having, and you can be witness to that. You can also attend all of the budget committee meetings that are happening on Thursday nights. The schedule of what they address on each meeting is posted ahead of time. And I would very much welcome more than the two people, or three, or four, that typically attend from the public. This is the town's budget, and you should feel free to become more versed in it and to advocate one way or the other. So that is an open invite that I think we all extend to everyone.
Our next meeting is Saturday morning at nine o'clock, so if you want to join us?
No.
Twenty-second.
It's the twenty-second. I guess I'm wrong.
We were here this Saturday.
I know, well, you came along Saturday.
So, to Denise's point, the next town council budget workshop is Saturday morning, the twenty-second, at nine AM. Please, feel free.
If you'd like to bring coffee, we'd appreciate it.
Mr. Tights?
Yes, Mr. President, I'd just like to say one thing briefly as to the other issue with the maintenance foreman, and that's the fact that, I'm not going to talk to the substance at all, obviously, but there is a legal argument that the agreement itself is not a public document. And that was one of the things that was negotiated, and if this council wanted to keep a secret, then you would have agreed with Mr. Martin's attorney that it wasn't a public document, and it wouldn't be out there today to be a source of criticism to you. But it was the unanimous consensus of this council that that was a deal breaker, that this agreement, no matter how bad it looked, it was going to be public when it was struck, it was going to be out there so that all the people could see all the details and not have any of it hidden. So I just want to make that clear.
Okay, thank you. Anything else?
Yeah, I just have just a couple. You know, this, this whole personnel-related set of issues is very difficult. I think it's very difficult for the council to deal with in a responsible and responsible manner. And I think it's difficult for people in town that are, that are observing to sometimes really know what's true, what's not true, what's, what's obvious and what's not obvious. I would suggest that my experience in government is that there's very little that is actually And so, that's a little cryptic, but in dealing with these issues, and Andy's sitting right there, he heard the requests for transparency, and I think that's something we'll certainly push as much as we can, and to what extent I can make myself better versed in the guidance on the open meetings, sealing the minutes and whatnot, I will endeavor to do that, and I will, you know, request that Andy maybe think a little harder about it too, and see what we can release and what we can disclose. That being said, I think there's a real difference in these issues between what is sound fact and what is conjecture, or what is reported in a newspaper, or on the television, or what is rumored around town. And that's really hard to deal with, I think, as a, as a public body and as a group that relies on the public body to make decisions on behalf of themselves. And I would suggest that no one on this council took these decisions lightly. They were very serious decisions. There was no clear path for success, and I think we ultimately made a decision that we thought was both responsible and respectful of all the parties involved. The idea that, it's been alluded to, that we allowed or we let people retire, there is no letting people retire. If someone has the standing to retire, they can retire at any time, save for termination for cause, especially with someone who has a pretty firm contract and union backing. It's a very difficult case to make that we, we made the, that we made a bad decision on that, on that instance. I just, I honestly, with that showing you videotapes of every deliberation we had, I can honestly tell you that there weren't many opportunities for success in this. And I know that makes the town look crappy, it makes us look crappy, and it probably makes you all feel pretty crappy, but I'm sorry, but that's how it is.
I just have a couple of quick things. For those of you who know me, who know me for a while, you know that I will do my best to do what's best for you. I don't sit here with any agendas or any such things. And what I'm getting to at is, as some point Denise pointed out earlier, there was obviously issues going on in the town, probably for a long time. And this is the council that decided to actually deal with them. And we had to make very, very difficult decisions regarding not just this issue, but a lot of others. And are they controversial? Yes. Are they going to be popular? No. But I'm doing what I, the best I can for this town. I grew up in this town, I lived here for a long time, I have a lot of friends, a lot of family who live here. I don't want to mess anything up for anybody. That's not why I'm here. But unfortunately, when you're put between a rock and a hard place, and you're darned if you do, and you're darned if you don't, you have to make the decision with, on the information that's given to you that's, that's best. Unfortunately, there wasn't a lot of information that we could use. And yep, it might have been on Channel Ten, but unfortunately, Channel Ten, far as I understand, wouldn't cooperate with the state police. So we couldn't use, or us. So we couldn't use anything that they had. So what do you do? It's like, how frustrating do you think that was for me, knowing what I know what needs to be done, and I can't do it? So all I have to say is, I'm doing the best I can, and if I disappointed some of you, I apologize, but that's all I have to say.
Again, I'll only make a few comments. It really boils down to, we made the best decision based upon the information that was presented, and we have to live with that. And as far as the money goes, they would have gotten the money anyway, it's in their contracts. That wasn't a negotiable item, per se. And, you know, you can read other stories in the, in the news. I'll only bring up a short one, applies to a particular worker in, I think it was Wisconsin or Michigan. A teacher was found to have porn in their computer, dead to rights, was solidly caught, and distributed this porn to other teachers. The teacher was fired. Other teachers were disciplined. The teacher went to court several years later. They had to pay him back pay for two hundred K, and he got his job back. The school district went to all the courts, up to the Supreme Court in their state, and they didn't win. And that teacher was back on the job, and the parents were outraged. So I can correlate that situation to what we're experiencing here. And I think we made the best decision from a fiscal, financial standpoint, and I know people may disagree with that, but I think we made the best decision, showing our leadership to the town that we could make that tough decision. Thank you.
And I'll just make one final comment. In my six years on the council, I have always tried to do what I believe has always been in the best interest of all the people in the town of Tiverton. This was not an easy decision, as this council has already said, and believe me, we fought about it, we discussed it, we did everything we thought to find, but you know, you can only go by what proof you have. And when all was said and done, this was the best agreement we could come to. But again, I will continue to do what I think is in the best interest of everybody in the town of Tiverton. And I don't have a personal agenda, I don't feel that I need to have one, because again, I listen to people, and I respect Mr. O'Dell, said he's heard from two hundred people. Well, I can tell you, my phone rang off the hook for more than two hundred people, and a lot who agreed, because not to drag something out would be more of a detriment to the town of Tiverton than to get it done quickly. And that's all I'm going to say on this matter. Thank you. We're done. Public hearing and public presentation. Evan Smith, Discover Newport, Volvo Ocean Race, May twenty-fifteen.
Good evening, Mr. President, members of the council. My name is Evan Smith. May I have permission to give a handout, please?
Absolutely. Would you be more comfortable sitting, Mr. Smith?
I'm fine.
Okay.
It's okay, thank you very much. I've been sitting for a while. My name is Evan Smith, I'm the president and CEO of Discover Newport, which is the Doing Business as the Newport and Bristol County Convention and Visitors Bureau. Simply put, we are the office of tourism for the nine towns of Newport and Bristol County. I feel a little bit awkward here tonight, because I'm trying to bring some good news, and clearly, your community is in the midst of some turmoil, but I will try to do my very best in giving a short presentation so you can get on with your very business at hand. First of all, I'd like to also recognize and thank Barbara Palatier. Barbara is the Tiverton Volunteer Appointed to our Board of Directors. Each of the nine towns we represent has a volunteer, and Barbara donates dozens of her hours to the conversation about travel and tourism in the state of Rhode Island. My purpose before you this evening is to start to educate the thirty-nine towns in Rhode Island about the largest sporting event that has, in my opinion, ever come to the state of Rhode Island. It's called the Volvo Ocean Race. And this will be visiting here to our shores in May of two thousand and fifteen. So you might ask yourself, "Why is this guy standing in front of us?" Talking about a sailing race that's going to be here in two thousand and fifteen. For any large event like this takes a lot of planning. This is a sailboat race around the world, a crewed race around the world. If you look at the third page, you'll see the calendar. This fall, these sailboats will leave Alcante in Spain in September of this year, and those hardy souls will take on one of the most challenging sporting events in the whole world, which is to sail around the world in ten different ports. So these crews, some crews are male-oriented, some are mixed. There will be one all-female crew racing. The Newport, Rhode Island is pleased to be the only North American stop, and that is something that the state of Rhode Island and all Rhode Islanders should be very proud of. This race started in nineteen seventy-three, this is the twelfth edition of it. They have stopped in Miami, they've stopped in Baltimore, they've stopped in Boston, and they've yet to find a North American home that they felt comfortable with and connected with. So we're very pleased to play host to them in May of two thousand and fifteen. This is a gargantuan event. You might say, "Well, Evan, eight sailboats in Newport Harbor doesn't seem like a lot to me." Well, that's, it's so much more than that, because Volvo International uses this as a corporate entertainment platform, and the Volvo Corporation will bring over twelve thousand people to Rhode Island for corporate entertainment. Just as a matter of record, Newport, Rhode Island has about four thousand hotel rooms. That means they're going to be using pretty much all Newport County, all Providence, and virtually almost all the hotel rooms in the state to launch this event for two weeks in May. This will present a whole number of different logistical challenges for us in setting this up, and therefore, it will take years to get ready. But what I'm trying to do is get out to the various different councils around the state, brief them about this. Many people in Tiverton own a boat, many people in Tiverton are sailing enthusiasts. I hope they will follow this on the valvooceanrace.com. All the information I've given you, I would tell all the attendees tonight, is on valvooceanrace.com. I was talking with a colleague and member of the media here earlier, Tom from East Bay Newspapers, and Tom had a similar reaction to most people who know about the Volvo Ocean Race, as he said to me, "They have no idea what they're in for." I do, because I've been to a Volvo Ocean Race stopover, but I must feel, you know, as I go around and I talk to Rhode Islanders, and I say, "This is going to be really big." People are like, "Oh, yeah, 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 sailing race." This is a gargantuan event, and we're really excited to be having it. I gave you a whole bunch of statistics back there. I don't want to bore you with all of this, you've all had a very tough night. My only presence here tonight is saying that something good is on the horizon that should make all Rhode Islanders feel good. Having said that, I know, I'm going to change the subject one quick moment. I know the community is in discussions about, the debate about whether it may be the right thing or not the right thing to perhaps construct a hotel here. I've spent thirty-seven years in the travel and tourism industry, I've opened up several hotels. I'm a free resource to you if I can help you at all in your discussions or deliberations about whether it's good or not to open up a hotel. I can help you with things like projected lodging taxes, property taxes, things like that that should enter into your discussion. So hopefully, I can be a resource for you to help navigate whether that's good or not. So I make myself available to you free of charge for any discussions, so.
Thank you.
Having said that, is there any questions that I can answer for the council before I let you get on with your busy night?
I just, it's not necessarily a question, it's more of a comment. And Mr. Smith, I do want to thank you for stopping by tonight. I, you know, personally, I would love to see Tiverton organize at a townwide level for this sort of event in a way that might, we might create more of a collaborative front across government, and business, and citizenry in general, whereby we could try to put together something to offer the something to offer these 12,000 or so people who will be stopping through for two weeks as a way to draw folks across the bridge and spend some time in our community. And, you know, I don't know what is the best place for this, if it's some sort of subcommittee of the EDC, or something along those lines, but, you know, we have a lot of organizations and businesses and people in town that I have to imagine would be very interested in getting on board with a piece of this particular action. And so, you know, I'm happy to go to the EDC and talk about it, but I really think it would be hoof to town to try to organize in a bit more fashion around this. So I don't know if other communities are doing similar, or...
Well, Newport County and Bristol County have some of the highest densities of marine trade-related services, and therefore, I think this is a little bit more focused than it is up in some of the Blackstone Valley communities. But again, this is the only North American stop. You know, we're representing all of America. Here we are, we should all be watching the Olympics, this is the only American stop, right? So we have a great deal of American pride, we have a great deal of Rhode Island pride, and we have a great deal of pride in that. But I'm available directly, I can leave my cards with Barbara Pelletier, I'd be glad to help with that conversation. Tiverton can benefit from this in many different ways, but, you know, I think one of them will be that there is also a lot of cottage rentals and home rentals here. You have a very robust real estate community here, and there'll be a lot of people looking to rent homes and houses here for that. So that will be one of the many ways the community can directly impact and get involved with it, so. I appreciate the opportunity to brief you. I'm sorry my timing was impeccable, but I'll let you carry on with your very business.
I was just going to sort of echo Bill's sentiment, and also just sort of mention that I know that the high school has a small boat building, and I don't know how, I don't know how technical it is, but they build, it's very technical. But, I mean, certainly, it's kind of, it rang a bell in my head that I actually know a gentleman who owns and races one of these boats, and it's leaps and bounds different from, you know, what the kids are studying now, but I think it shows the scale and scope of what is attainable and what the industry looks like. And that's really exciting, I think, especially for a 16-year-old kid who, this is an opportunity that they would never forget, you know, to be involved in something like this, even tangentially, so.
I think you raise a great point. A number of schools across America adopt a boat, they have live, you know, basically Skype conversations with the boats as they're going around the world. They follow them as a geography class. Social media allows them to do so many different things today, so that's a great opportunity for our school kids, because they can get down and see them in May, so.
Yeah, so I would just, I don't know, it's what we do, but we'll get there.
Hi, Mr. Smith again. I think it's super. I want to thank you for coming in, and I think it's very exciting for Newport County and for us. I mean, it shows our history on the water, and shows how important boats and boat building is in this area. And I, for one, am excited, and, you know, and together, I think we can all work and maybe do something exciting here in town for this event.
Again, I'd be glad to help with any of the brainstorming or thought processes, I'm glad to come, so.
Again, thank you, Mr. Smith.
Great to see you all.
Mr. President, if I make one comment, I'd like to make the comment that I made to Barbara when she told me that she was going to have Mr. Smith here, who I've heard before. And my comment, initially, my reaction was negative, but then I realized there are some positives, there are things that we can offer. But I think most importantly, and what I said to Barbara was, maybe this will make clear to people in Tiverton that we really don't have the facilities to take advantage of this type of situation. I know that Mr. Smith is looking for hotel accommodations. What hotel accommodations do we have here in Tiverton? So I think it gives us something to think about in the future. Do we want to take advantage of these type of opportunities? And I think that, from having heard Mr. Smith on other occasions, clearly, there are advantages out there, there are situations that we're just not able to take advantage of.
That's what I'm suggesting.
Never want to miss an opportunity. That happens to be the 1% lodging tax by town in Rhode Island, and when you get down there and you get to the Tiverton line, you notice it's blank, so.
Yes. One of the shocking, I mean, to look at those numbers and realize what we're missing out on here in Tiverton in terms of the revenue that we could get for lodging, for meals, for drink.
That's just, yeah, that's just the 1% lodging tax, doesn't get into things like property tax. The top 10 commercial property taxpayers in the city of Newport are all hotels. Newport Marriott pays $1.1 million in property tax, so. Again, it's something I'm well-versed in. If I can help you with your conversation and your deliberations, this is a community discussion, it's got to be worked out through the whole community, but it is a specialty of mine, I'm glad to help you.
Thank you so much. Thank you.
I just want to suggest to make sure the route doesn't go near the Secana Bridge tolls, in case the transponders get them. Yeah, but it might still get them, I don't know.
Yeah.
But think of it this way, Captain Gray was the first one, had Columbia ship to it to circle navigate the world, and he was a native.
Robert Gray, that's right, Captain Robert Gray. Yeah. On the Columbia, and that was the first one.
You could reenact it.
Exactly.
All right. Okay, the town council is sitting as a board of licensing. James Carlson, Afterglow Incorporated, 295 Main Road, requests approval of holiday license, subject to meeting all legal requirements. Is Mr. Carlson here?
James couldn't make it today. I'm Randy Gifford, his partner.
Okay. If you'd just give just a little overview of what Afterglow is, I know what it is, because I can read it here, but...
It's, actually, there was an existing tanning salon there, Endless Summer Tanning, that's in our building. Went out of business, we took it over, and going to open it up under Afterglow, new owners, so we're looking to get, just open on holidays, and get it opened up and start making some money, hopefully.
All right, Madam Clark.
Madam Clark. Wow. Not my best night was.
Request, Afterglow, any issues?
No. It would be subject to anything, anyway, but no, I don't have any issues. It was an existing.
All right, then I will entertain a motion.
I move that we approve, it's a holiday license, to Afterglow Inc., 295 Main Road, in Tiverton speak, it's what used to be Humphrey Oil way back when.
Second.
Subject to meeting all legal requirements.
We have a motion in the second, all those in favor?
All right.
Motion carries. Good luck, and welcome. David Lopes, Central Bakery Development Corp., Doing Business As Central Bakery, 70 Show Street, Starting New Business, requests approval of victoring license, subject to meeting all legal requirements.
Good evening, how are you?
Hi.
We are a business that was in Florida, Massachusetts, and we are moving over to Tiverton, so we just wanted to get your approval on starting a business in Rhode Island.
Okay, great. If you could just give us an overview of what kind of bakery you're going to be and so forth?
We've been in business for four years, it's a family-run business, it's a third generation. We make Portuguese muffins, we ship them all across the country, and we're just expanding. We found a nice building here in your town, and we just want to just continue moving on with the family tradition.
Great.
So, here we are.
Do you make malasadas or masa?
No, just plain cheese muffins.
Oh, just bolos.
And right now, it's just wholesale, right?
Yes, it is.
But in time, it may become retail.
Yes, right now, we have such a demand for wholesale, so.
So strictly wholesale in the beginning?
Yes.
And making the neighborhood smell nice.
Yes. We'll try to help with that.
Well, I'd happily move that we approve the victoring license for Central Bakery Development Corp., Doing Business As Central Bakery, subject to meeting all legal requirements.
Second.
We have a motion in the second, all those in favor? Welcome to town, and I hope you get bigger and bigger.
Thank you very much.
Okay, Milk and Honey Kitchen LLC, Doing Business As Milk and Honey, 3838 Main Road, requests approval of holiday license, subject to meeting all legal requirements. Cheryl Callahan here.
Mr. President, may I ask that you continue this for two weeks? When I reviewed the packet, I noticed that the letter from Mr. Eames states that it's an allowed use, but yet it's an R-80 zone. It's not in the commercial zone. And I did inquire as to why that was, and he was researching it somewhat this afternoon. There's apparently a letter from a previous building inspector that says the same thing. It says it's an allowed use in an R-80 zone, but that's not what the correspondence between the building official and the owner of the property indicated, and we, maybe there was a zoning board decision that we are not aware of, but I would like to research it more carefully before considering it.
It's an existing use, right?
Well, it's an existing use, but the existing use was for more of a limited use, not including the milk, it was more as a farm stand. Now, it may have, I think it may have been used more widely, but that's what the use of it states even on the one letter. And that's why I'd like to find that out. I'm not saying it hasn't been used that way for a long term, but we have, in fact, dealt with issues where people say, "Well, you issued us a license, so therefore, you must have known what we were doing, and therefore, we're okay," and so forth. So frankly, I would like to research it a bit further.
Is Ms. Callahan aware of all of that?
I doubt it. It just came to my attention as I was, so I was taking another look through the packet, and I said, "What's wrong with this picture?" It says it's an R-80 zone, but it's permitted use. So it's only since this afternoon.
They already have a license.
Yeah, so what do we say?
Well, it's a holiday, I think they're asking for a holiday.
They're asking for a holiday license.
The only difference is, so they, I don't know if there's any holiday that they would otherwise, there isn't any holiday that they'd otherwise be closed on between now and two weeks from now.
Mondays.
I just don't understand.
President's Day isn't a holiday that does that. Until we get, I think until we get to Easter, there's no holiday that they need a holiday license for.
But I don't understand what two weeks will make, like...
I want to see the, I want to see the file of the zoning officer to see what's in there. And I'd asked, apparently, a different file got left for me, not this one. I want to see what's in the file and what correspondence there is, and if the zoning board, I want to be sure if our zoning board ruled on it or didn't rule on it, and that information was not available to me this afternoon.
So this could be a bigger issue than just giving a holiday license.
That's correct.
All right, well, I will entertain a motion to move this to our next scheduled meeting.
Second.
We have a motion in the second, all those in favor?
I think that's a typo. I'm in favor, and I think that's a typo.
Okay, so this will be, when's our next meeting? February?
25th.
25th.
Fourth, yes.
Yeah, you'll contact her? All right, thank you. Okay, nothing under appointments and resignations. Unfinished business. Leroy Kendrick's Draft Legislation Waste Water District Charter Continued from 1/2714 for Solicitor Review. Mr. Kendrick's?
Good evening. Over the course of the last couple of weeks, I've had several conversations with the town solicitor. He's reviewed the enabling legislation, gave us some comments, and we've incorporated those comments into the draft legislation, and are requesting tonight that the council pass the resolution, so that we can move this to our representative and get the bill drafted.
Questions from the council?
Yeah, so, Mr. Kendrick, I see in the document that we were given, it looks like we have red lines in place from Mr. Tights. There appear to be questions here that I don't know whether there will be answered before you engage our state delegation here, or...
Well, they're, they want a draft, so they're going to go through it and tidy it up and make sure it's all, it meets their standards. So they're not looking for a perfect document, but, and I've been told that, in essence, what we've asked for, they're going to approve it, assuming it's been gone through by our town solicitor and that, and they're just going to present it in a way that meets their standards for legislation. They're not expecting us to draft it in a bill.
I think I can answer your questions, if I may, Mr. President. Mr. President?
Yes.
Okay, if I can address Council Gerlach's question? Yeah, I think we will have a clean version, and Mr. Kendrick's was able to answer all my questions. Most of it was just clarifying, you know, coordinating, yes. It would include the possibility of other communities, neighboring communities, both in Rhode Island and in Massachusetts. Not that it's planned immediately, but it allows for that. And given the geography between us and Westport and Fall River, it certainly makes sense to do that sort of thing. Likewise, one of my concerns, and I guess, I hadn't realized this was going to get there as this version, but the, just as long as it's out there, make sure everybody knows, there's no power of eminent domain in this bill. There's a section that was there and...
Section 20, which was deleted.
Yeah, deleted there. So I just want everybody to be comfortable with that, that there wouldn't be any eminent domain as part of it.
And do we have a sense of whether or not the, our state contingency will get this through this legislative session? Is that the target?
Yeah, I sat down and had a meeting with Representative Jay Edwards, explained to him what we were trying to do, and he's in full support of it, and doesn't see any issues from a legislative standpoint. Basically, what he told me is if the town council wants to do this, generally, he'll present it in such a way that it'll be persuasive, and it shouldn't be a problem with it being passed by the state legislature.
The only other question I had, and this came up when the last time you were here, do we have that definitive list of town assets that, or tangible assets, tangible town assets, I suppose, that would go over to the newly formed...
We do, we do have a draft list. One thing that remains to be dealt with, and the town solicitor and I talked about it, is the interceptor, and it's not necessary that that be addressed in this enabling legislation, it's just something we're going to have to deal with once we entertain the transfer of those assets. But there is a draft list that exists.
And just refresh my memory, the transfer of those tangible assets would hypothetically happen upon passage of said legislation?
Well, we're hoping that the legislation gets passed, and we're looking for a date, probably July 1st, to give us some time to have a proper transition, get the resolution of the interceptor and those kinds of things done. So if they pass the draft legislation in late March, early April, then we won't actually do the transition, well, it will become hopefully effective July 1st.
I would just like to request getting that list, so that I'm at least personally clear on what assets of the town we're talking about turning over here.
Specific, well, just in general, the town has pump stations and sewer pipes in the ground, and the, what they call the L account fund, and the interceptor. I mean, but that's basically it, there isn't much.
Okay. And I, Mr. Tights, weren't we going to look into the effect of the TIF bond?
Yes, I'm still looking into that.
Yeah, that would have an impact on this also.
Right, and that has to do with the interceptor, so whatever agreement... So whatever agreement we come up with, we'll have to, we'll have to work that out. But that's not an enabling legislation deal, that's, that's, what's the timing of transfer in that particular asset, and how's that going to be handled?
I mean, my, my view on that is, the key thing is to make sure that the, the assets and the liabilities are going together. If, if the town still has the bond liability, then we still want the asset. If we can get rid of the liability, then the asset could go with it, and both of those could go to the, the new district. I'm not sure whether that would be, that may not be financially feasible with the bonding requirements to get them to amend it, so we might have to continue to own the interceptor for a while and lease that to the district, and, you know, with the idea that the lease payment, that, make sure that, as I said, the assets and the liabilities stay together.
One, one thing I would like to inform the town council and the public, Steve Levy, who is the person that drafted our legislation, is also advocating for us to get money, grant money, et cetera. And so he's arranged meetings with our federal lawmakers, actually tomorrow in Washington, D.C. So I'll be meeting with Senators Reed and Sheldon Whitehouse, and Representatives Langivin and Cicilline to talk about the, supporting us in USDA funding and grants, and try to get favorable interest rates and, and favorable terms. So he thought it wouldn't be a bad idea to talk to those folks and let them know what we're trying to do here, and, and gather that support on a federal level.
Anything else from the council?
Who prepared the document? Who wrote, who?
Steve Levy. We hired him as a consultant.
No, who actually made this copy? Who passed it out to us?
That is probably me. I, I mean, I received it, and yes, I know there's some formatting stuff there in the middle, that's the way I received it. And I made the comments to it. So, that's the way I received it. Unfortunately, with Word, we would have lost all the formatting to, completely to do it. That's what needs to be done, though. It needs to be completely reformatted.
Right.
Which is what, obviously, will be done before it goes to the legislators.
Correct. Do you have an intern in your office who can kind of say, hit spaces in between these words, kind of thing?
I can try, yeah. I do.
Anything else from the council? Then I will entertain a motion. So moved.
Second.
We have a motion to approve the draft legislation, continued from 1/2714. We have a motion on second. All those in favor? Post.
I'm sorry, is that five to?
Yep.
No, did you put me as no?
Six to one.
It was six to one.
Six to one. Thank you very much, Mr. Kendrick. Okay. Financial business, discussion of the municipal budget for 2014-15. Well, obviously, we have been working on this, and we have made some, some dramatic cuts, unfortunately or fortunately, depending on which way you want to look at it, we have more to cut. So our next full budget meeting will be on the 22nd, for us to go over and finalize it, so we can send it over to the Budget Committee. Obviously, this council has worked diligently to pare it down and to have the least impact we can on the taxpayers of the town activated. So as it stands right now, it is not finished, we still have more tweaking to do on it, and by the 22nd, we should--
Nancy, has the, has the Budget Committee got back towards whether or not they agree to the joint meeting?
Yes.
I know there was discussion--
It seemed to be in consensus that on the 25th, the Tuesday, which is what the council date was presented, that at least as many as could, so we'll, I'll get with them and we'll post as a joint meeting.
And I also would like no one to forget that the budget meeting, the Budget Committee meets every Thursday at 7:00 here at Town Hall. Next week, this Thursday, I believe, we're discussing the fire department?
Police Department.
The police department, I'm sorry. I don't have it in front of me. So if anyone, anyone would like to come in here, the conversation, your input is very greatly appreciated, and the Budget Committee has asked me to say that.
And just for the councilors that are not at the Budget Committee meetings, I did present the updated budget from the last cut. I asked them to be patient, that the council is still reviewing the five-year statistics and still tweaking down some accounts, and they realize this, they also were handed out the five-year analysis. So they realize this, and they are being patient.
Okay.
And I think so far, they like the progress that we are making, and they appreciate the work we are putting into this, so.
Now, I did have it down as, as a budget meeting this Saturday, 9:12.
Yeah, me too, me too.
I had the 22nd, because someone couldn't make the 15th, so that's what I had, but just set the date you want.
I'm glad you said that, Joan, because it is, me too.
Oh, I have it too.
Yeah, we all do, it was the 15th.
Can we all make the 22nd?
Because I, I don't--
It'll make a difference what weekend it is to me.
We all, did you write down the 15th?
Yeah.
I did too.
Yeah, I have the 22nd.
You weren't paying attention. You must have been talking to me yet, because I have the 22nd.
Apparently, you and I, Nancy, will listen.
So what are we going to do?
I would prefer this Saturday.
I would prefer this Saturday also.
If that's a killer, then.
Were you available on 15th?
Yes. Be the lawyer.
Yeah, 9:12.
Yes, I remember us even discussing, it was after Valentine's Day, it was, it was the 15th, but--
Okay, so everyone's in agreement, 15th.
Do we have time to post it yet?
Yeah.
We may not have those answers tonight, but we'll have answers to the questions, the items that we sort of red flagged by then.
And Denise and I located a little more that can be cut too, so--
I don't have my binder, but I know they were--
Yeah, we had some.
Police pension.
Mr. President, Saturday is a walk-through of the fire department.
Yeah, and I'll be there.
From 9:00, so I'm not sure if that's your confusion, then the 22nd is the fire department, so.
I'll be there at yours, and then I'm going to come right here, so I'm going to--
Wait, the 22nd is the fire department?
No, this Saturday.
Saturday is a walk-through, 22nd should be my budget presentation to the Budget Committee.
Okay.
The 22nd, isn't it, is--
Should be a Thursday night?
Yeah.
No, that's a Saturday.
It's Saturday.
You are the 20--
Was it the 20th?
Yeah, you are the 20th, because I confused you and the other chief.
Yeah.
Okay.
Okay. So we'll have that, at least--
What is that, the updated one?
We, there were about a half dozen items we were getting more clarification on--
Right, and that's what we're working on, yes.
Yeah.
The insurance one is already pretty well settled.
And I'd like an answer on the police pension.
Yes, she did, she reviewed on what it is the treasurer has, and so we'll have that wrapped up this Saturday.
Thank you.
Okay, good.
I have the list, yeah.
Thanks.
Okay, all right, so just so everyone's clear, we'll be meeting on the 15th, 9:12.
And that'll be a special meeting--
Special meeting, yes. Okay, and I would just put possibly the 22nd also.
Yeah.
Okay. Okay, anything else? Okay, under new business, discussion on hiring of a new town administrator, including contract terms.
We don't have any backup information?
No, I gave you all the copies. But I have extra copies made here, just in case.
Oh, no, I do.
I have more, just in case.
My briefcase weighs 35 pounds.
Oh, yes, I, yes, I might have it.
And just to be clear, because I'm getting a lot of calls on this, we're still in the process of background checks.
Yes, and we have not, just for everyone's education, we have not hired a new town administrator as of yet. We're still in the process.
We're trying, though.
But we're looking at a, you know, a contract, what we feel will be in the best interest of the town, and just tightening up some things that were in the old one, and changing some things that we, as a council, feel we might need in the new one.
We know that all the language on the health insurance has to change, so that's one thing we're--
The salary?
The salary line has to change.
Well, it'll change when we get there.
It'll change when we negotiate.
Yeah.
Oh, I hadn't written something else.
The idea of a probationary term?
Yes.
Yeah, three-month probationary.
Life insurance has to be updated.
And we decided three months?
Yes. I don't know where that would fall within the framework, but that needs to be in there.
You said the health insurance, right?
Yeah, that, yeah, that has to be changed.
Life insurance, too.
Life insurance.
Yeah.
Let me follow up with the correction.
Is there an extra copy for Andrew?
Is going to change to what?
We had 100,000 across the board on the last iteration of all of our department heads.
So you want this changed to 100,000?
I'm just being consistent.
No vote, we're just saying, okay, so you want--
Does that bother anyone?
No, I guess what we did for everybody else, yeah, that needs to be updated, too. The next place you're going to be updated to.
We're firing you after this, so.
I just had some--
We've had enough of you.
And I don't know if, Andy, if you can look at the wording, quote unquote, on a probationary period? And it's three months, but you know how that should be worded, and--
I believe there's a young lady that might still be in the audience who spoke earlier, who is a little lawyer, HR consultant, somebody might be able to pick up on our offer and--
At some point, maybe.
Get a few pointers on this contract?
At some point.
Now, the job evaluation, I should say yearly, right? Employee has the right to conduct, at any time, but at least yearly?
Yeah.
See how it says, employee has the right to conduct job evaluations at any time during the terms of agreement. I think it should be, and also yearly, no less, no--
You know what, if you're not really ready with all your changes, why don't I add this to Saturday's special meeting? And that way--
Give us more time.
We can look at it.
You can have more time to look at it and mock it up, so we collectively had it. I can add that as an item to Saturday.
Yeah, if everyone agrees we can do that.
I just have a quick question.
This is not actually also the, this was the first of the model ones with Jim, but then, after you went through a cycle, there was a whole change--
Right.
--to have a newer model--
Yeah, there was a newer one than this.
--which I'm assuming you would want.
I didn't want to revise that one.
No, no, include, but to have that one, as opposed to taking the old one--
This one, right.
--and bringing it up.
This isn't even ours. This isn't our model contract.
No.
It was 2008, signed by Louise Durfee.
Right, was your, was a, was a previous model contract?
It was, yes. Not our, not the one that we spent--
And also, make a note--
The prior administrator didn't have anything under the bar.
And make a note regarding automobile.
Right.
Yeah. Because that's not even--
So we might be able to have more concrete information by then, too, and you might be able to tailor it better. So why don't we just put it on Saturday?
Yeah, I'm fine with that. I just have a quick question. Number two duties, it talks about the job description attached as Exhibit A, is that this, is that the job description that was part of what we revised for the posting? Or is that a separate document?
I didn't, what's in the charter?
Well, the charter, but you can add to that.
Well, I'm just saying, if this is an opportunity to take a fresh look at that, and perhaps put some more detail based on past experience in there, that we really want to make sure folks are accountable.
Well, here's a suggestion, I will scan and send to you the ad with the added in the model contract as is, it won't be tailored to him, but, and then maybe you can mock that up by Saturday and bring it in, and then at least everybody's got their thoughts already down. We'll scan that and get it to you tomorrow.
Okay, all right, so this will be on our agenda on Saturday. Okay, anything else? All right, bids and requests, we have none. Town administrator items and announcements. Acting town administrator?
I--
Interim.
I do have, do you want to set the date for the planning board meeting at this point? It's got to be before the March, or ask them not to do it in March, but during April, it's up to you. But remember, you need another meeting there for the planning board, unless you want to think about it and decide Saturday.
Yeah, because we've got to figure out when, with all the meetings we've got scheduled.
Okay. I did have a call today from Steve Hodford at the governor's office, and he said that the--
How's it going?
He was doing fine, he was asking how I was doing. And he, you know, on this pension reform action that's going on, so he did say that the mediator was, was going to be holding a press conference on Wednesday. Now, I understand that tonight, the governor or somebody was on saying, oh, yes, Wednesday they're going to have a meeting. Well, he is, he wants to relay this message that there will be, the governor will be holding a technical briefing for the town COs and the finance directors on Wednesday at 5:00, on whatever, I guess, is what the impact on municipalities after this briefing goes on. So I'll be attending, and perhaps Ed will, treasurer will not be able to attend that evening, she has a commitment.
Anything else? Nancy?
That's it.
That's it, okay. Council announcements, comments, and questions. Counsel Aruda, reconsideration of Jonathan Contror's appointment to the Comprehensive Plan Advisory Committee due to residency.
Yes, I believe it was back in, what was the date of this? Back when we had appointed the Comprehensive Plan Advisory Committee, we had voted on certain members to be appointed, and there was one individual, after we had made that vote, was contacted with concern if another person had residency in the town. So, doing some work myself, and Nancy had did some work herself, there are possibly some questions about this item, and I wanted to, I believe the language should be rescind appointment?
You can't rescind an appointment, you can remove someone.
Okay. Well, can we have, is basically a procedure to rescind the vote?
No, you cannot rescind the vote. The only, the only thing that can be done with a vote is at the next immediate meeting, if it's, complies with the open meetings laws, you can have a motion to reconsider from someone on the prevailing side of the motion.
Which is Mr. Aruda.
Which is me.
Right, but it's not, this was back in October. So at this point, you've appointed someone, the only thing you can do is, I mean, if there's a question, as I understand, there's a question whether someone meets the qualifications from the office, the appropriate thing would be to basically have a hearing, invite them to come in, you have to give them an opportunity to present their case, and you have the power, I mean, you have the power to remove people. This particularly is an advisory board, you have that power to remove them, but you can't do it without at least giving them an opportunity to state their case. Why? It's called due process.
Yeah, but--
So, if he's here tonight, then, then that's fine, you know, to do it. But the, the proper thing to do would be to, you'd be removing him, it's not rescinding the vote. The vote is done.
But why can't it be undone?
It can be undone by removing him.
Okay.
I just, I, I'll wait until everybody want to comment.
Everybody want to comment on this particular component?
If I can express one concern that I have. Under the state law Title 17 elections, I don't believe that it would be possible, with the material that we have at this point, to ever say that somebody is not a resident for purposes of being an elector. There are a whole number of prima facie criteria set out in the statute. For example, I'll just give you a typical example of what a prima facie criteria would include. And altogether, there are only 13. But number one, the address furnished to a division of motor vehicles for the voter's operator's license. Mr. Contral has indicated that 11 of these 13 criteria apply to him and would indicate that he has met the prima facie criteria for establishing his residence in domicile. That's one issue. But the second issue, in reading the statute, and we'll be looking for Mr. Tice for his advice, it goes on to say, "Once acquired, this domicile continues until another domicile is established." So that we would, it seems to me, we'd have to prove that this particular appointee was never a resident of Tiverton, or we have to be prepared to establish that the domicile has not continued because he's established another domicile. Now, that's what the statute says. "In addition to all of the criteria that Mr. the applicant indicates, apply to him 11 out of the 13." And just for informational purposes, I'll read a couple of others so you get the idea of what's involved. And number two, the address from which the voter's motor vehicle is registered. That's a criteria for determining domicile. Number three, the address from which the voter filed his last federal income tax return. That's a criteria of domicile. And the particular applicant that we're talking about meets 11 out of 13 of these criteria. But as I say, in addition to this, I'm concerned about the sentence that clearly indicates, "Once acquired, this domicile continues until another domicile is established." It's my understanding that Mr. Contral, for decades, has now considered himself to be a resident of Tiverton. We would have to be prepared to establish that he never was a resident, whether that's 10 or 20 years ago. The other issue I have is that this sets forth the criteria in what I'd call a presumption of domicile for voting purposes. So that we could end up with the incongruous situation where if this town council were to remove somebody for not being a resident of the town, we would have the truly incongruous situation that the Board of Assessors has decided that he is, in fact, a resident and elector and could continue to vote in this town as an elector. I don't know how you could ever reconcile that. My only thought is that while we may have the authority to remove anyone, it would seem to me that the first step in this to avoid that type of situation is to simply say the first responsibility is with our Board of Assessors. They obviously, I'm sorry, Board of Canvases, I'm sorry. They obviously had to make some determination at some point, however many years ago, that he in fact was a resident and elector. And until they make the decision that he is not and meet this obligation of establishing that he has, in fact, established another domicile somewhere else, it would seem to me that we're simply setting ourselves up for an impossible burden of proof.
Well, you bring up the domicile somewhere else part. And part of what I passed out earlier this evening was an article from Steve Urban column.
Which I read. And that, I guess, was what set me off a little bit, Jim. Don't take this in any personal...
Well, I mean, this leads me to believe that maybe there's some questions that have to be answered here.
I understand that, but nobody has to answer the questions. We would have the burden of proof with respect to all of these issues. But here is what Mr. Urban said, in quoting, I assume, the applicant. "I can vouch for the situation in Swansea. I lived near him," referring to another speaker.
Yeah, there go a couple lines above that.
Okay. "I was also understanding, Jonathan Contral of Contral Brothers Kitchen and Bath in North Fairhaven, said that he lives in Swansea directly facing the Brayton Point Power Station."
And this was May of 2013?
I, you know, I leave that to Andy Tice, whether or not that's going to be sufficient and whether that would be considered sufficient for the Board of Canvases.
The charter just requires that members be electors.
Okay.
Okay? And there's two things. One is the council's power to appoint members. This is an ad hoc committee that you created. You have the power to remove people. You don't have to meet a standard of proof, I don't think, in this as far as who you appoint to an advisory committee. I do think you have to give them the opportunity, and I wish you would come forward. I mean, because what we're dealing with is hearsay on both... I'm dealing with hearsay on the sense that it's, there's a newspaper article that quotes him. So the newspaper article to begin with and then quoting him could be misquoted and so forth. We all know, as we discussed earlier, that oftentimes the newspapers don't get everything correct. So I don't know about that. By the same token, we have something in writing from Mr. Contral that checks off a lot of boxes and says, "I meet all these." But I don't see anything beyond it. So I think it's appropriate, if the council wants to get into it, I think it's appropriate to have this inquiry, either tonight or to schedule it another time. And you can hear from him and see whatever documents he wants to produce. And as I said, I don't think you have the same high standard in removing him from an advisory committee that the Board of Canvases would have if they were to try to remove him from the voting rolls.
That's the sort of incongruous situation I'm trying to avoid. That we're going to remove somebody for lack of residence despite the fact that the Board of Canvases considers him to be a resident and elector. But if Mr. Contral would like to address us, I'd extend the invitation, Mr. President.
Actually, I was going to ask if he would prefer, you know, sufficient notice. And, you know, we can go with the next meeting. Or if he is willing to come forward now, I have no objection to that.
Can I just get any questions answered? Andy, I'm sifting through. Where is, in the charter, does it reference our requirements? Or does my charter not have that section?
No, it's hidden in the back somewhere.
I just want to have everything in my hand.
It's the same issue that came up with the street committee.
Yes, I know.
And those who know me know that I've had issues with residency in the past, so I will...
That's why I had that, you know. I don't know Mr. Contral at all, I don't know you at all. And I voted for you based on your application. So just reading that and then bringing some things to my attention is just not asking questions. Could I just introduce another point? Are you still searching?
Andy is. And he will tell me when he's done.
Residency aside, and I'll take you at your word here, just kind of a technicality that's worth noting is, and it could have been anyone, but Mr. Contral is also a member of the EDC. And while you were elected or you were appointed as a member of the public, technically it does give the Economic Development Commission two seats on the Comprehensive Plan Committee, where no other board or commission has that.
It's, I think what...
Section 1011?
1011, I think, and I'm trying to split my brain in half, but...
Well, I was voted in at large. That makes a difference. I don't know, I'm just, I'm asking the question at this point.
Okay, thank you.
So just for the record, the section we're talking about is Section 1011, 1011 of the charter. On the very bottom of page 26, which is, "Members of boards, committees, or commissions must be electors of the town of Tiverton. No members of boards or commissions as listed in the charter shall be elected officials or employees of the town of Tiverton, ORI, except as provided in Section 1213."
While I acknowledge your statement, I mean, we knew that when we voted, right?
Well, when we put it into that committee, my argument for Mr. Contral and my point in favor of Mr. Contral was we didn't have any representation here from North Tiverton.
I was going to note that, you said that. And I agree with that sentiment.
Yeah, Mr. Contral was the only applicant from North Tiverton that we had. And I thought that certainly that section of the town should be represented.
Mr. Contral, thank you, you know, for coming up. What's that issue? And again, whether or not we can legally figure out where your true residence is, is, I think, not for us to decide at this point in time. But, you know, you have stated, according to the provisions of Chapter 17-1 regarding elections in the town of Tiverton, and you stated that your motor vehicle is at that address. Your taxes are filed from that address. Financial institutions and so forth are all at that address. Correct. You know. And again, I mean, a question, and you're the only one that can answer to us. I mean, apparently you do have a resident in Swansea.
I have several properties in Massachusetts, too, in fact, in Swansea.
And do you reside in the one in Swansea?
I do stay there.
More than you spend in Tiverton?
No. And if it pleases the council, Mr. Aruda stated that he doesn't know me. And to know me, you would know that I grew up in Swansea. And I live directly across from Brayton Point. And I watched it go from a small, single boiler with one stack to the monstrosity that it is today. So when I was interviewed at our offices in Fair Haven by this gentleman who happened to know, a friend of mine, he married a gal I went to school with when I grew up there, we got into a conversation. Now, he didn't want to speak to anyone except anyone from Fair Haven, but we got to talking because he knew me through his former wife. And I think if, I remember that article. My son called me and said, "Please be careful of what you say because I made a comment about the residents of Fair Haven, something to the effect that they're a bunch of crybabies and you want to see something that pollutes. Come on over to Gardeners Neck Road. And better yet, how about North Tiverton? Because it doesn't matter which way the wind blows. We're pulling everything that plant has to offer. And if it blows west, it goes into Mass. And when it blows east, it blows into Tiverton." So that was my point to this gentleman. How he printed it up, whichever way he wanted, this is the way he printed it. So make no bones about being close to Swansea. My parents lived there. My father's 89 this year. I do a lot to help them. I moved to Tiverton in the summer of '75.
Your business.
And I've served this town time and time again. And I'm here with documents that I produced today. And I also have a letter of resignation for the board or the council, if they want it. Not interested in assisting anybody who thinks I'm trying to circumvent something that is important to me. Period. Know me or not.
I wasn't making allegations to such, Mr. Contral.
Well, you call me to the table, and here's the documentation.
I was only questioning what I read in this article about living in Swansea.
Do we have a company?
I mean, is that reasonable? I think that's reasonable.
I think the due diligence is a little lax, but that's the information we're looking for.
You want to give that to the town?
When you moved in 1975, are you referring to your company moved here in 1975?
No, I moved here as a young man. I lived on Riverside Drive. I worked at Pirate Cove.
I was just wondering, okay.
Bought my first house here in '81. I raised my family on Cliff Street. Been in North Tiverton and ever since.
And your residency in Tiverton right now is on Main Road?
Yes.
Where do you have your business, below?
Well, actually, the property is a mixed-use property, as are a lot of the properties up in North Tiverton. That property happened to support itself, which is one of the reasons why I purchased it. I was renting at the time. This enabled me to have a place to live and a place to operate my business.
That's at 35?
The property's at 35 Main Road, correct.
And the Gardeners Neck Road is your other property where you stay frequently?
Well, 1488 is an old farmhouse. We leased that. And 1129 is a B&amp;B that we operate. And I do have the capability of staying there if I want to stay in Swansea.
You know, I've only driven by 35 Main, so I can't speak to the configuration inside. But I don't see anything that tells us there is an apartment in there.
That's what I was asking.
Well, like I had stated, the property is a mixed-use property. So when I bought the property, there was a two-family home, two-stall garage, and two storefronts. It's a mixed-use property.
So that's my question, where do you stay in the two-family home?
Correct.
Is that...
I just have one question.
I'd like to review what he brought.
Mr. Contral? Title 17, this Chapter 17-1 that you made check marks and signed it on the back. "I am a resident of Tiverton, Rhode Island." Do you stand by that?
Yes, I do.
Good enough for me. I mean, we have no other rubric in which to assess this. I'm not sure, I mean, go ahead.
Yeah, I've looked through the packet of materials provided. The first thing I want to do is, there's a federal income tax return with the address of 35 Main Road, and there's a state income tax return filed, again, from 35 Main Road, Tiverton, which clearly is, you know, subjecting him to a lot more penalties than this council could impose if it's wrong. I want to hand this back to you, though, because once we hand the rest of this to the council, it's a public document, and I don't think you want your income tax returns to be a public document. So let me do that first, so you've seen me. I've removed that from the packet, but it's there. Do you have a problem with anything else here? I see you've crossed out account numbers and whatnot. You're okay with this being public information? Yeah, that should be fine. Okay, I just, I mean...
Yeah, just make sure it's redacted in there.
I asked the office to redact anything that was...
Okay, we'll double-check that part.
Okay, thank you.
So when I, you know, hand it around. But it does include the driver's license and a contractor registration board and a DM license, all from 35 Main Road, Tiverton address, and correspondence from financial institutions and nonprofits and others, all of that. But what am I...
What I was going to say was, oh, go ahead, sorry.
Just to be clear, the Board of Canvas did what the Board of Canvases required to do to clarify the being an elector in the town. We have the ability to see the DMV. We saw the DMV that it was registered there. We checked with the city of Swansea to make sure... checked with the city of Swansea to make sure there was not, he was not registered, Mr. Cottrell was not registered there, which he was not, he has a record of the last 10 years voting here. So, it did go, and Mr. Cottrell was, did check off and sign this, which, so for the Board of Canvas, that is fine, short of, I do not, we do not follow Mr. Cottrell to see where he goes at night or anywhere else. So, that satisfies the Board of Canvas because the Board of Canvas felt if any of this were not true, or if Mr. Cottrell was signing a document like this that is not true, he would be in far more peril than what the Board of Canvas would do, because that would be election fraud in a federal. So, it satisfied us at that point.
Well, my intention wasn't to make it go that far, it was just...
No, I know it isn't.
This is disappointment, this for this board, that's...
Well...
What I have taken from this thus far is that the state of Rhode Island, and by virtue of this town, has adopted what is a pretty straightforward requirement for establishment of residence for voting purposes, which we would also just prefer to as being qualified as an elector. And they're really, I mean, these are the requirements. We don't have any other specific requirements, there's not a... I don't know what you would... I've struggled with this a lot in various other capacities. What does it mean when you live somewhere? Is it just that you sleep somewhere more days than you sleep somewhere else? There's no real, to me, compelling definition, other than someone's own admission and where they otherwise do all of their personal, financial, and legal business. I don't know what other, I mean, if we're going to go down this road, we're going to have to ask everybody that owns property in more than one town or state that's on a board or a commission, starting with this one. And I don't know what, it has a funny smell about it, that's all. I don't think there's a real hard and fast way we can, aside from taking our own established qualifications, and aside from that, I don't know what we can do to qualify someone as a resident, other than what we have to qualify them by. I mean, I'm sure there are plenty of people who, for long periods of time, are on travel, or on leave, or on other sorts of endeavors. If we enumerate the number of nights I've spent on the road, or in hotel rooms, or god knows where else, you know, you know what I mean? That's just what I feel, anyway.
I think for us, and as Mr. Cottrell has, for me, has stated to all these requirements, as our town clerk has said, that the penalty for not being truthful on these is far more greater than anything we can do. And if Mr. Cottrell, you know, stands by these, then I think we have an issue in trying to justify, you know, and again, if, and again, Mr. Cottrell, you know, it's your veracity that's being questioned.
Yes, it is.
You know, so that if these are not true, then again, you know, it's federal and state issues, you know, far beyond what this town council can say or do. So, again, I can only go by what you've attested to, and you state that you are a resident of the town of Tiverton, and you have proof in that you file your federal income tax from that address, your state income tax from that address, your driver's licenses at that address, your professional licenses are at that address, so I have to assume that you are a resident of the town of Tiverton.
I hope that for someone who's been here for over 30 years plus, that that would mean something, which is why I'm here.
And that's why I voted for you originally.
Good, I appreciate that.
I mean, like I said before, I mean, I'm not trying to cause any ill effects against you, Mr. Cottrell. It was just someone made a call to me, I did some investigation, I came upon this article, I just had to ask some questions. That's all it is. You believe that or not, I don't know what to say, but that's all it is.
Councilman Ruda, I take you at your word, and I hope you can do the same for me.
Okay.
Thank you.
Okay, before we go any further, any further discussion or action the council wishes to take on this?
I just want to, I'm totally satisfied on the residency, I just, whether it was you, Mr. Cottrell, or anyone else from, besides Mr. Scott Humphrey from the EDC, I just want to make sure we're all clear that we have two representatives from the EDC on the comp plan.
Yeah, we knew that.
Okay.
Well, I didn't originally vote for your appointment, and that was because there was someone else that I wanted to consider, so I just want to make that clear. It wasn't, because of your residency, it was just, there was other candidates that I was looking at, but I did not know that you were on the EDC.
Yep. Well, when Scott, as our chairman, asked, "Does anyone here want to assist with this? We need volunteers," I volunteered. It's not something I was lined up, saw it advertised, say, geez, I ought to do this. I felt that if they needed volunteers, or Scott said they need volunteers, I can volunteer. I think this town has a long way to go with trying to get expenses and taxes under control, and if I can be part of that, it's only going to serve the community, it'll serve everyone in the community. When I came to that meeting, I was told that I was voted as a citizen-at-large, or whatever the term may be.
One of the three.
I introduced myself as John Cottrell from EDC, and now, Mr. Cottrell, you've been voted at-large. Now, it is a fact that I am a member of that committee, and if there's something not right about that, then, believe me, I'd rather stay on EDC than create a problem.
I don't think there's any disqualifier, yeah.
It's a half-hog advisory committee, I mean, not to put down the work you guys are doing, but it's an advisory board that ultimately gives recommendations, and then those recommendations get sent on, and, I mean, it's an iterative process.
We just talk a lot, that's what we do. I know what that's all about.
Okay.
I just have one comment, you know, you have to understand that it is very confusing, it is a multi-use lot, but the address you're giving is a storefront, and that's what it looks like. So, you can understand where people would assume that you can't live there because it's a commercial property, it's a storefront, and where would you live? But if you're saying you live on, in the other building, it's another apartment...
It's a two-family.
That's where the confusion is, because I'm sure that that other building has a different number.
There's actually three numbers to that property.
So, and...
It's like the building across the street has six numbers, so which would I use? My staff accepts everything at that one site, so I can have everything in one place.
But you can understand whether it would be a public confusion, because you wouldn't be necessarily living in the building at 35, all I want to say.
I can certainly understand the confusion.
Thank you.
Anything else from the council? At this point in time, I guess there'll be no action, so thank you, Mr. Cottrell.
Thank you.
Do, who wants this?
Oh, goes back to Nancy. All right, town solicitor.
Thank you.
I'm sorry, could I just make a quick announcement, since we were on Jay, really quick?
Oh, I'm sorry, yeah.
Yeah. So, just a quick reminder, last plug for the local business forum that's happening tomorrow night at Tiverton Four Corners Meeting House from 6:00 to 8:00. It's shaping up to be a great event, we have quite a few RSVPs. If you do end up attending and parking is a problem, just want to note that the folks at Gray's were gracious enough to let us do some overflow parking into their parking lot, so just be careful crossing the street, hope to see you there.
Great, thank you.
Go ahead, Mr. Teles.
Thank you. First item is just, I think it was in response to Councilor Palatier last week, just a report update on the quarry licensing. Good meeting, we had a meeting, I think you've seen it in Kate Michaud's report, there was a meeting with several of the people from the former, in Rhode Island terms, the former Douglas Quarry, which is now owned by Lynch Brothers, we met with a couple of people there, and their attorney, and their engineer, and the towns engineer, and myself, and went over that. Where their lawyer wanted to make the point that he wasn't agreeing by being there that they were under our jurisdiction, but nevertheless, they're going to try to work with us, they did provide a plan right then and there with contours, we're going forward, working on the plans, I advised them of the issues about the blasting and the groundwater concerns with Stafford Pond.
What do you mean they don't acknowledge that they are under our jurisdiction?
Well, the way the ordinance is written, they're saying, because they do granted-only, they're part of the except-for clause of the ordinance. We have a couple of different ordinances, I don't agree with that, but that's their position. But I'm just saying, that's the lawyer making the position, it was not acrimonious, it was just noted, and they are, at least at this point, trying to go forward to work and get their application before the planning board, and that's the council. And they did indicate they have had seismographic testing done during their blasting, and they also, one of the key things was, we wanted to get a contact, we want to get someone who's there on the site with a cellphone, so that we have it and the neighbors have someone to contact, so we're moving forward with that. Coincidentally, we also had a meeting with one of the principals from Viking Stone and his concerns, and we're setting up a further meeting either later, probably later this week, on that, so we're moving forward on them individually.
But Viking isn't operating currently, right?
Well, they're not supposed to be operating at the moment, that is correct. They are legal non-conforming use, but they are not supposed to be operating until they comply with these requirements of the plans.
Do we have reason to believe they are operating?
Not yet, no.
I don't like that answer, but...
I don't, I have no knowledge of them operating.
Okay.
But that's because no one's come to me with a complaint that they're operating, that's kind of how it works, if I don't know, if no one complains about it, I don't know about it, and...
You can't solve problems you don't know exist, I know.
That's right. I have enough problems that I do know exist that I can't solve, and all at once, let alone the ones that I don't know about, so. So, we are proceeding with those, and I expect that we will probably have the first ones coming back to the council within probably about two months, because I'm thinking it'll be about a month before they get to the planning board, and then come to, my goal is that we have it all set one way or another. They may disagree with the planning board recommendation, but there will be a proper planning board recommendation before they come to the council.
Thank you.
Do we have any legal standing to make sure they're not operating, like, can we just make visits?
Probably, well, we can't, not without a search warrant.
So, we had set in place, I'm sorry, Jim.
Go ahead.
We had set in place a procedure that we were going to go forward with, which included getting the non-compliant quarries that were not licensed up to licensing, or get them to, by virtue of not doing anything, to forfeit their license or abandon their license. What happened to that? Or is that what's going on now?
That's what's going on, it's just going on more individually, rather than as far as a letter to have everybody all come in at once and not have their information together, so we're doing it...
So, we're going toward, we're looking at Lynch Brothers because they're the only operating quarry at the moment?
Well, yes.
That we know of.
Well, Site Ready...
We don't talk about Site Ready.
We don't talk about Site Ready because we disagree, we'll talk about them in a minute, actually.
But Lynch Brothers is the one that...
Right. That's the biggest, we're getting the most complaints, and the biggest one, so that seemed to be the one that we should put our efforts to immediately.
Yep.
And then we're working on the others at the same time, but they're the main, largest one, and clearly operating, and we're getting complaints, so that's the one I want to focus the efforts on.
What, in your estimation, does the future look like timeline-wise? What is the next step? How can we either get them in compliance, or make some decision as to what action needs to be taken on those quarries?
Right. Well, I'm hoping that we'll have the further plans and information from Lynch within the next month. I'm hoping that we'll have time enough to get it on the planning board meeting for March. Now, I don't know, February's a short month, and they're meeting at the beginning of March, so I'm not sure.
And then they will forward recommendations to us, and then we can make a decision.
That's right, they'll be hearing for the town, the people, the neighbors will be able to come and raise their concerns, and you'll be able to ask the Lynch people as well, you know, what about it?
But that's probably not going to happen until May, June?
I think April, May.
I do, too, but I'm cautiously optimistic. Okay, great. Not great, but, you know, it is what it is, thanks very much.
Schofield versus Tiverton?
Yeah, next two items are just, you know, cases that have been filed against the town. I do provide the council with these, when someone sues the town, I provide it and put it on the agenda so it becomes a public thing. That is in no way any indication that I believe it's a valid complaint, or was Schofield that I believe it's non-fribulous. I believe that Schofield complaint is a frivolous complaint. It's a pro se complaint, and it's frivolous, but it's a complaint against us in federal court. We have submitted it to the inter-local trust, and they are defending, at this point, they're taking their standard reservations of rights, saying if there are individual misconduct by any of the police officers, they don't cover that, but if they find it, they will call that to attention, but at this point, they're defending it on our behalf.
I'm going to, out of an abundance of caution, recuse myself.
Sorry. Okay. Any questions on that? Next one is DeMello et al. versus Betancourt and the town of Tiverton. This is...
Which one is he, refusing himself?
The Schofield one.
Oh, the police one.
The police one.
He can come back.
I'm sorry, I didn't even notice, among the 27 pages was a relative of his name? Sorry.
There are very few people in many towns they miss listing.
Sorry, I didn't catch that earlier.
Okay, and I'm sorry, I didn't even, among the 27 pages and all the people...
I didn't recognize the case, that's why.
Next one is, number three is DeMello et al. versus Betancourt in the town of Tiverton. This concerns the two calves that died at Gray's Ice Cream, and we previously received claims, which we had denied, we referred those to the inter-local. Now, a suit has been filed, and we referred that to the inter-local, and they'll be defending us on that as well. Number four, LAL Site Ready versus Tiverton, U.S. District Court. This is good news. There are two separate cases in Superior Court. One is the case that the town filed against Site Ready, and in that case, we sought an injunction to prevent the bringing in of the Fall River Recycling, and using the property as a transfer station for that Fall River Recycling, if you recall that. And we also, at that point, added into the complaint the issue that we thought their current, some of their current uses, including the blasting that was going on there, was an illegal use. They were quarrying, and they are not a legal non-conforming use with the quarry. We were successful, they entered into a consent judgment, a consent judgment as to the TRO to remove the... to remove the Fall River recycling while the case was pending. And the state court has been pending. In the meantime, they proceeded through the planning board, and it's on appeal to the zoning board, and that will be going forward as well. Then they filed, they filed a suit against the town in federal court, essentially accusing us of picking on them. The technical term for being violation of equal protection, and their violation of their First Amendment rights, saying that because they had filed an application with the planning board, we had gone and sued them, and we were trying to stifle their First Amendment rights to do that. That case has been defended, again, by the inter-local, since the town's been sued for money damages. A motion to dismiss was filed on several grounds, but the motion to dismiss the case was granted on the grounds that it's not ripe. Until everything goes through the zoning board and the state courts and whatnot, there really can't be a question of whether we deprive them of any rights. They might get approved. They might win in the state court, they might get approved by the zoning board, then we haven't deprived them of anything. Or they might be denied, and it might be appropriate, particularly if the state court upholds our position, then again. So on those grounds of ripeness, the federal district judge dismissed the suit. But it's obviously good news. It's one less suit. That was a suit that sought financial damages against the town. And there was also a lot of burdensome discovery, including a lot of deposition of individuals, including council members and former council members on the horizon. And all that is now over, at least for the foreseeable future.
Good.
Well, good.
Anything else, Mr. Tate?
Nope, that's all I have. I will just say, I will put LAL Site Ready on an executive session on a less crowded meeting, so we can talk about where to go further from this. But there's nothing that needs to be done tonight.
Madam Clerk?
Let's see. Actually, regarding the meeting on the planning board, we happen to have five weeks in March, March 31st. It's held for a workshop anyway. Would you want me to try and get the planning board on that night? They would have to hold off that item until their April meeting, but at least we could meet on a night that you would already be having, a fifth Monday. You'd be having a meeting anyway.
It's the 31st?
31st.
March 31st.
I would be planning on attending that anyway, too.
Ah, I'll tell you, I won't be here.
You won't be here?
No. That's fine, you can hold it down, I won't be here.
Kate can check with the planning board, see if that's amenable, and then we'll get back to you. And if it's not, still gives us plenty of time.
I am free that day.
Or reasonable, at least.
And I just want to make mention that Mr. Bellucci is back on vacation, although he missed last week's storm. He sent me an email today that said his snow budget will probably last one more storm for the contracted plowers, or two small storms, so we best be hoping for good weather.
Hoping for two small storms.
He'll be giving a report on all his budgets. And just one last thing I want to make mention. The secretary in the town administrator's office is on vacation this week. So although I'm sitting in there, if somebody's calling, you might have to call a couple of times to actually reach me if I'm in between. But I am sitting in there the most of the day to make sure all calls are answered or anybody coming in looking for us. Okay, that's it.
Okay. All right, Mr. Lambert?
I move that we go into closed executive session for the purpose of approving executive session minutes of January 27, 2014.